Board meeting for the special board meeting from South County Fire Board Commissioners, a special board meeting for people nine. Calls to order and please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, up next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. We have the draft agenda in front of you. If not, I will move the adoption of draft agenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Chance. Agenda, is there any discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote on them, please. Aye, aye, proposed, pass again. That brings us to item number four, which is approval of the meeting minutes. And that's something people choose to twenty-four regular meeting and there is couple of adjustments. Five of twenty-eight related to the written and verbal statement from Commissioner Roland last week. There were five individuals named in there. Commissioner Wittes. And then on page six, item eleven, the union report, just got correction on the spelling. I would move the adoption of the of the draft April two twenty-four meeting. That's with those. There's second. Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence moving second to adopt those. Uh, meeting minutes, is there any discussion? If not, I'm going to vote on it, please. Aye, aye, proposed, pass again. It's been two, five, which is public comments. Any requests of public comments? Start first in the room. Is there any question of comments? Not seeing anything. We'd like to check anybody. Last chance. Okay. Any requests for public comment? Thank you. We will move on in the agenda to item number six then, which was going to require two support.
Good evening, commissioners, public and staff liaisons. I've, I've got the privilege tonight in the chief's report. Well, the privilege to one of the first things that I was able to do on the first day of course, to promote three individuals on any organization and much like Chief Hobus, that's one of the best jobs. Fire chief gets to have is to, is to watch people and watch them progress through their career in the organization. But as a result of, that happened as a result of one of our battalion chiefs that is moving on to the second chapter of his life and he retired. If you go in that slide. Steve Ness is a battalion chief. For us, his most recent assignment was battalion chief of training. And I think you can talk to the folks in the street. He will have an impact for the work he did over the last couple of years in that division for many years to come. I got to know Steve. And I will tell you, he will be a leader that's missed in this organization. And I told him I was going to try to convince him to stay. And at the end of the day, I actually didn't even find the heart of that. Steve, Steve's got over thirty years of service and started his career in nineteen ninety-three. And my guess is the best day of his life is walking in. Next best day of his life, as far as his career goes, and probably the worst day of his life was when he actually walked out. And I don't think he realized how hard it was going to be. And I would venture to say that the folks over here, when he walked out, it was just a soft question. So, so congratulations to Steve. I don't know if he's on tonight. I did talk to him earlier today. But he won't be a stranger. Instead, they come down and visit here and have to do some proof. So congratulations, Steve, as moves on and he will be a, an asset of this organization that we've been missed. But his legacy will next slide please. As a result of battalion chief Ness retiring, had the privilege of promoting Chris George and throwing MSO with the rank of battalion chief and actually process with him. And I think the crews like him because his first shift as battalion chief, he had a fire. So Bruce, Bruce tended to watch that and follow it. So congratulations. Um, next, as a result of Chris getting promoted, next slide please. We were able to promote Danny Devo's to the position of MSO. And I have not had a chance to talk to MSO Devo's after we promoted. I look forward to that conversation. And I know she'll do well in that position. As, as we move forward and as a result of all these other promotions, we had a captain's position available. And next slide please. Is Alan Reavis. One of our firefighter paramedics was promoted to captain. Again, he's a, you guys may know him. He does a lot of the labor, labor reports. The result of some of the work he's done with eighteen twenty-eight. I had the privilege of talking to him as he was coming in for his interview prior to doing the promotion. He will do well and I'm looking forward to watch him progress in his role as captain of the organization. So one of the best things we get to do is promote people. You know, hire people, promote people and, and we're happy to say, well, the first things I got to do is change this from a pretty exceptional people to leadership positions in the organization. So I think it's important that the board sees our, our, our new leadership. Hopefully, as, as they go through the period, you'll see them progress over the next years as we go. Next slide please. Um, just for everybody's awareness, we have a open house at Hilton Lake Station number twelve, the eleventh of April, five fifty-seven, as always. Commissioners attendance is, is welcomed and greatly appreciated and I think for those that have been. Our open houses are really very, very, very well attended and, and I don't think anybody walks away saying it wasn't a good time. So our, our pub ed and communications division does exceptional work. So if you're available April eleven, please say bye station twelve. Next slide please. This is kind of fun, too. This isn't the first time Chief Maxwell has been published. And I know that you guys know he's got a, he's got his masters. And he's got a passion for looking at human performance and how to make us better, how to make the people that work for us resilient. Um, and I think you were emailed this article this afternoon before the meeting. It was in the I Chiefs magazine. And it's actually very interesting and it's, it's, it's become a passion of Sean's. Um, and so if you guys have any additional questions after you read the article, you know, I would ask that you do. Feel free to reach out to Sean because there's a lot of. I think this is, there is a huge future of, of what Sean wrote about. That is very applicable to what we do and, and the long-term success of fire service and employment. And I think you'll start hearing that being a topic that we talk about often at the strategic level of the organization of how to make us better, make us more resilient. And for the employee group. So one other thing. Just a quick update on fireworks. The county, they had a county council meetings today. And they were putting on the agenda was to set a public hearing for the ordinance for fireworks. And this is to ban the sale in the area. The discharge is already banned, which is what we originally asked for. I believe Strom Peterson from the county council assistant will lead on this. We think that they selected the fifteenth of May for that hearing, a public hearing on the topic. Staff will verify that and make sure the board is aware of that. Um, and we'll make sure we have the appropriate attendants. We'll reach out to Councilman Peterson's office to make sure if there's anything specifically they'd like from the RFA on the topic that we meet his expectations, but we intend to, plan to be in attendance at that hearing. And if anything changes, we'll make sure to keep the board appraised. And with that, that concludes my chief's report for tonight.
There's just some comments. Yeah, I want to congratulations on the promotions. And that's great. I mean, I'm really so happy too, but also Chief Maxwell, if I get the audio, can you autograph it for me? That's great. Really congratulation. I'm really proud of you. I think it's really make us, you know, South County Fire really a leader, I, I would say. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? We actually need to take a break, which should require a few minutes to put a technical issue that are recording. Like maybe five minutes. Five minutes. You could just, you could take at least a five-minute recess without objection, technical fix, and then we'll be back.
Again? Okay, we are back on the record with South County Fire Special Board Meeting for April nine, twenty twenty-four, after a brief technical fix break. So we are back to our next item on the agenda, which is item number seven, which is the union report.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
I can hear you guys a lot better now.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So tonight, not too much to report on. Justin was on last week, kind of gave you guys the rundown, I think, on most of everything while I was out last week on vacation. And so outside of that, though, commissioners, I think the only other update, and I don't know if Chief Eastman updated you guys on it or not. And, and I know it's one of the board priorities is the post-medical retirement. And we went ahead and actually gave the green light, I think it was yesterday, saying we'd like to proceed with moving forward with trying to get the planned documents developed. And so I'm looking forward to seeing where that goes and what that looks like for both of us. So but I think it has beneficial, it can be beneficial to both of us as the organization and obviously our members. So appreciate that being a priority and we look forward to seeing where that goes. I think that would probably conclude my report, short of just congratulating Chief Eastman again on his promotion. And all of our other members that were recently promoted as well, too. So with that, that'll conclude my report.
President Moore, thank you. Is there any questions from the board for President Moore? Any question, any question? Great. Thank you so much. Next up, we have item number eight, which is unfinished business. And that starts us with eight A, which is the benefit charge reauthorization resolution for action. And that is with Chief Eastman.
Good evening again, board. So I believe we had to make a couple edits to the resolution. So you have a the most current copy in front of you. And, and I guess I'll start by saying, and it's, it's, it's taken a while for staff to get their head wrapped around extending the benefit charge. And, and as you know, we're very accustomed to renewing the levy, the EMS levy and do, and doing those. And so in our mind, we're treating the benefit charge very similar to renewing the EMS levy and, and they're very, there's, it's the same, but very, very different. And so part of the, the edits and the changes were a result of, we were looking at it from a a levy perspective and it's, it's different. And so I guess the big thing I want the board to know is that we're moving forward. The resolution puts a ten-year or a continuation of the ten-year benefit char, continuation of the benefit charge for ten years on the primary for twenty twenty-four. It's a simple majority vote. And, and this is the piece that's very different and it is that that if voter approved to continue the benefit charge, we still get to finish the last two years of the current initial vote. And this ten years will extend after it expires, which would mean that if we pass it successfully, it's good for twelve more years. That's very different than than levies, right? So I, I want, that's a, it's, like I said, it's taken staff a while to get there. So for, for us that have levies on the mind, this is continuation of the benefit charge. It's, it's not a revalidation of the benefit charge. We're using different terms and that's, that's very deliberate at the end of the day. So I wanted the board to understand that, because like I said, it's taken staff a while. So before you, you have resolution zero four zero nine, two zero two four dash zero six, which is for your consideration to but, to put a continuation of a ten-year benefit charge on the ballot in the primary for twenty twenty-four.
So Chief, just a technical question. We all have an insert with the latest version in our, is that what we have here? I just want to be sure. The insert is the current version that we're voting on or are likely to vote on.
Yes, I'm, I'm confirming Melissa's on the same page. Yes.
Just want to be sure. Okay. Questions for the board regarding the issue generally? No? Okay. Well, then this is on for action. Is there a motion to approve resolution zero four zero nine, twenty twenty-four dash six? Commissioner Lawrence moves the adoption of the resolution and seconded by Commissioner Fernhoff. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, uh, which is to place the fire benefit charge on the August primary ballot. Is there any discussion on the motion? New discussion on Commissioner Chan?
I think advantage charges to the citizen is really equitable to me because of the Yeah, I just want to emphasize again, a benefit charge is really equitable to many, many our citizens. I think that's a good way because the user paying for it by the formula and that way. So I totally support it.
Other comments, other comments? If not, we will move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously.
Two more, to just additional, what to expect? Leslie and team are advertising for pro con tomorrow. And they have the names to come in or the people that requesting to be on pro con to come in by noon on Tuesday. Staff will be prepared to bring those forward to the board next Tuesday at the regular board meeting for the board to seat the pro con committee. And we've got contingency plans in place if we don't have. If we don't have anybody apply or that stuff, I will be out of the country, but, but Chief Maxwell and Director Hines will address that topic at next, at next board meetings if needed, if that's okay with the board. The other thing is we also will have a press release that goes out to talk about your action night to put on the ballot. And also Leslie's going to put a, a quick brief together or notification together to let all our elected, our, our cities know that we're going to have a measure on the ballot. And we will follow up when I get back from vacation with them and talk about a supporting resolution, some of those other pieces. So that's, that's the other work that's happening behind the scenes. And as always, Leslie and her team are working on the education component that will be rolled out in subsequent meetings for you on that topic. So that's what's to be expected for the next meeting and, and what staff's going to work on behind the scenes to ensure that our partner cities know what we're doing and, and, and hopefully get resolutions to support if the board chooses to request those. So that's all I have on the topic.
Any questions for the chief about those next steps? Where's your chance?
Yeah, and Leslie tell us about the plan, about advertising. I'm going to go for real transparency. I think that's important. I don't want to be going out and then people don't notify it, not notify. I assume that we have on our website and that type of thing admin news and yeah, can you give me the plan?
So I can, I can bring the communications plan in and go over it with you sometime, but I can tell you right now. We, we, you know, we started by advertising the public hearing. We've had information on our website since prior to the public hearing. And now that you've placed this on the ballot, tomorrow we'll update that. And we will have information in our newsletter that's going to come out in two weeks, around about two weeks. And we, we have quite a few things planned. One thing we will have is a presentation that will be available for community groups. So we'll let people know about that. And we also are planning on doing some community question and answer meetings, especially in some of our new cities, cities that are new to the RFA because those people didn't vote on the benefit charge the first time around. So we figured they may have some questions and we'll probably do at least one Zoom meeting. So
Yeah, I'm more concerned about because only get one, people only for the polling coin, middle, right?
We actually have, we only have one week before your next board meeting for the pro con committee nominations, but they aren't actually due to the county till May third. So if we don't get a lot of nominees by next Tuesday, we can talk about some other options that we can try to do before May third.
Okay, so people can have a chance to all the way to, we thought to join the, the poll coin.
Yes, and, and information out on that tomorrow.
Can we even put an advertising in the newspaper like hell or somewhere?
Can, we can. I, you know, I, we haven't done that for a while. Melissa, do you remember if we advertised for it last time? I think we had better luck with just sending out a news.
I don't think we have ever placed an advertisement specifically for this and the timing is really tight.
We'll also share information on social media, too. We have
Yes, or media, but I think a lot of time the public notice on the newspaper, at least we did our job. If they noticed, don't notice. But I, I just don't want to get in a situation, people completely not aware of the pro coin.
I think we're casting a pretty wide net with the news release, but
Liaison Fisher.
Uh, because of the fact that the city of Brier doesn't use a bunch of the other forms of communication, we did put it in the newspaper and we got nothing. It'll be a waste of your money, in my opinion, because people aren't reading newspapers anymore for that kind of stuff. And everything that Leslie has, you know, said that it will go the different ways it'll go out. I, I, I think you're going to hit a lot of people that way. And, and if you don't, I don't know, maybe, maybe there are people that we know in the area that we could encourage to help.
Maybe I'm still always, but I thought we just did whatever we do. So nobody can complain to me is that's we discharge our responsibility.
They're going to complain whether you do it or not.
Next, Commissioner Tiofle.
Uh, with the news release, do you think the Herald will write a story anyways? So that'll be the coverage that we were desiring?
I don't know about the Herald. But I would be willing to bet some of our more local news sources in the south end here and throughout our area will publish it.
Great. Yeah. So we don't have to do an advertisement because the purpose of the press release is to have a journalist write, write about it.
And, and we will also share it on social media starting tomorrow.
Any other questions for the chief or Ms. Hines, kind of about next steps on the fire benefit charge? Any other question? Great. Thank you very much. Next up is item eight B, which is the Muckeltio annexation ILA for discussion. And that's with Commissioner Ed Wittes from the inner governmental committee.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, where we're at with that is we, we've told everybody where we were and what we met and that we needed to have a meeting to proceed on which way to go forward. So we need somebody or some person, a committee to be able to say that they're part of the negotiations for the ILA and also the direction in which to go. So we know it's a small annexation. We know there is a loss of income. The one concern that I know I've had and the committee's had is there's no public input on it. Uh, that's the one thing that is lacking with this, that doesn't happen with an election method and or petition method. But that's kind of where we are there. So I'm kind of throwing it back to you guys. I know Chief Eastman has some other items. Go ahead.
So I'm still waiting for a meeting with the city administrator. I got an email from him on Monday. He got some information back from their legal counsel that he's working through to answer some of the questions Commissioner Wittes is talking about, specific to how, how, what's, what's the mechanics of what we're talking about? In other words, you know, are we signatories on the ILA? Are we not? I mean, some of those, some of that piece, I don't think we, we know exactly what those mechanisms are to either say, yes, we're supportive of it, or no, we're not in opposition to that form of annexation. And I, I just want Commissioner Wittes to know, I haven't, I've yet to meet with Steve. We've sent emails back and forth. I'm waiting for him to set up a meeting to get the rest of that information to help inform the board.
Basically, probably just wait until you get more information.
Well, I, I think, yeah, I think for, for specifically of how we, how we deal with the Muckeltio specifically, I think, I think the conversation about the ILA method of annexation has merit for discussion because it's new and we want to make sure the board understands what that entails. To let you know, I did a little bit of work like, like you asked yesterday. There's twenty-six residents that are involved. The population affected is one hundred and eleven people in this annexation. I think, I think I misrepresented. It's not point four one acres. It's point four one square miles. It's just approximately eighty-four acres to let everybody know. A hundred and thirty-nine million or, yeah, a hundred and thirty-nine million of AV for us at our current tax rate and taking the equivalent of benefit charge, that though, if the city annexes, the revenue generated by that area for the RFA is just over a hundred and seventy-five thousand annually, plus or minus. And so, but yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I just haven't, I just haven't done my part yet, waiting for the city to meet to help the rest of that conversation as far as what's the hoops in the process, because I don't know if we really know yet.
Well, it seems how we all don't know because it's brand new. We probably should wait then.
Yeah. And I, and I, and I think we have time with, I mean, I think the city, the city wants it done obviously faster than faster than slower. What we didn't understand in that meeting is they've been working with the county for a year and a half on the topic and negotiating the ILA or whatever that is. And, and I think part of the reason it took so long is because it is new legislation and a new way of doing it. One of the dates that is important for us is I think the city would like for it to be completed on or before the first of August. Because then tax collection, they'll get the revenue from that area after the first of the year. And so if we work the timeline back from then, we do have time. The challenge is, is the county wants to take up approval of the ILA last. And we have to, just have to remember sometimes getting things on the docket with the county council, there's, there's time constraints there. So I think it'd be better to wait until I actually have talked to their city administrator to help part of that conversation. And I think we have time to do it because they haven't gotten back to me yet. And he knows I'm going out of town and knows when I'll be back.
Okay. Would that be okay?
Sorry, sorry.
Question. Yeah. What's the purpose of them annexing this space? They just want more revenue?
Sales tax revenue? Because they get the commercial affiliated with it. And there's other, there's other aspects to it. I, I mean, they, they've wanted this, this, this part of property before. If you look at where it is, you know, Joe Marine or Mayor Marine will say it's, people think it's already in you know, Joe Marine or Mayor Marine will say it's, people think it's already in the city. You can say that about any property that's bordered. People think they're in the city or not in the city based on what their city zip code is, but their sales tax base there. I think that's more than the residential properties for the most part. That's why they take it.
Then I guess my follow up question is, um, if we choose not to do it, then it just doesn't happen? Or does the county have uh, the ability to say, no, this, they have control over us?
So as, uh, uh, my understanding is um, we have to agree with the ILA, the ILA method for this annexation to happen via the ILA. Um, if we don't agree with the ILA method, they can't use that method. So for all intents and purposes, the RFA has, for lack of a better term, I say they can veto the ILA method of annexation. And then the city either has to go back to voter annexation or petition annexation.
I guess my last question is, uh, is there a risk of us, uh, of them going to voters and like, maybe we lose more tax revenue? Cause they'll include other pieces of property?
I think we always, I mean, if you look at where the Muga is, and, and if you, if you look at where the, their, their borders are and the we always, we're always going to be subject to Mukatyo annexing their Muga um, over time. Um, whether they're small, small pieces or large pieces. Uh, in this case, I think they're being very specific in what they're looking at and, and, and to be honest, I don't think from the city's perspective, they're being I, I think they're being realistic and, and I, I, it's not like some of the, what we would call cherry picking of the commercial properties that we've had previous years for annexation. This one's not um, like that. So I, we, I think we always run the risk of that um, at the end of the day.
Thank you. Liaison Hoffman.
Uh, looking at this map, on the eastern side of Beverly, they're picking up, it looks like six, seven properties over there. Uh, who controls the other properties in that area as far as fire services? That, would that be the RFA?
So um, I, I talked to Chief Acetelo um, yesterday afternoon and, and for the most part, we're first due. Maybe with the exception of is it the McDonald's, Jason? The McDonald's and those six that strip mall area there, um, maybe Station 25 is first due. Um, but we're predominantly first due to most of that area, um, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, it's kind of a funny geographic cut, right? They're, they're picking some specific properties, but if the rest is what the RFA is covering, it would seem like Beverly Road would be a, a good cutoff for figuring it out. But the way, the way the run cards are currently set up, we're the closest to those and, and that's by, that's by static GIS mapping. You know, just so the boards are aware, it's based on GPS location of the vehicle via vehicle locating and that's the closest appropriate unit response regardless of jurisdiction. So um, there'll be times where it's our units going in there first. There'll be times when it's 25 that goes in there first based on you know, where they are and where the GPS satellites placing them at the time. So it's, it's kind of one of those real close to the line um, at the end of the day.
And if I could answer that a little bit more, what we were told anyway, everything on the east side here of Beverly, Ed. Uh, the mayor said that was because the county insisted upon a peak of the surface water management is all I know about that.
So the plan moving forward would be to get more information and come back to the board?
And keep it in mind that we're going to come back and ask these same questions again.
Fair enough. Is there any um, questions from the board or Commissioner Wiz or Chief Eastman, Commissioner Chan?
Yeah, I, I agree. We need to slow down. Uh, because it's not answered, but I also, I think during our last meeting, I think Commissioner Roland kind of suggesting that um, I think that's a Fernhoff's district, I think. Uh, you're, that, that's your district.
It would fall into two. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so we made only 26 residents, right? I think our courtesy, I think my courtesy that they have the contact number and everything else. We should read, you know, send them a letter as we just talk to them at least, get their opinion, right? Do they really want to, right? Give them an option. Still, the net you pay is $175,000, right? Still a lot of money. I mean, you know. Um, also that during our meeting, on the first meeting with them, they said they have no plan. That's their record. They have no plan uh, for the new commissioner. Uh, they have been big history. Last time they were trying to you, you, you were the chief at that time. They were trying to annexing a whole a whole area in there. But luckily, at that time, they go, they got a incentive of a sales tax, right? And now they don't have that much, but still. Um, I think we do it because a good, we want a good neighbor. That's the only reason we, we do it. But otherwise, we need to really slow down because at one time when we were first meeting, they tried to really kind of get it made done and all this stuff. I agree with you. I mean, if they delay, just delay, right? There's not, is, is not a big problem.
Yeah, and, and I think in, in Intergovernmental, we talked about, you know, we can hold a public meeting on the, a public hearing on the topic. Um, make sure that the, the constituents in that, you know, in that area know, we want to hear what their thoughts are on it and, and maybe help inform the decision or inform, um, give information to the board to make an informed decision on what we do with this one specifically. Um, if that, if that's the wishes of the board, I think there's, once we get the information back from the city administrator for the city of Mukatyo, we'll have a better understanding from staff what that means. And then, and then provide that information to Intergovernmental, then the full board. And, and I think that will help drive, you know, where, where, or what the best options are to reach out, whether it's, whether it's a public hearing, whether it's, you know, a letter, whether it's a phone call. I mean, we, we have the availability to get the information of the people that live in that area. I, I think it's, once we know, once we have the rest of the story, so we understand, you know, kind of cradle to the grave where we're going and what, what actions we need to take. Um, I think that will help decide where, where and how the board wants to go, or if they want to, you know, abolish it and say, we're not, we're just not going to support these annexations, or we're okay with this one, or we're okay with it if we do a public hearing. I think there, I think there's some options the board has. And once staff, I think we still have a little bit of homework to bring you back um, to help you, you know, pick which is the best decision. Um, at the end of the day, and I don't think we've given you all the information you need to make that decision yet.
I think in the past, but, but Hilton, uh, the Civil League area. The reason is that because the respond time of the sheriff, county sheriff versus the local police. Both is the same thing. They said because of the, the respond time. Now this, can it be the similar situations? Uh, we don't know. But a lot of time people basically, they like us, but but the police may be overcome. So then we're gonna make a decision. You know, should we go with the, what citizen wants or how we want to do it?
Any other questions or comments on the issue, Commissioner Teofle?
Uh, so my comment is, uh, I, I can always change my mind, but right now I'm leaning towards um, not supporting a, an ILA. I feel like in principle, it'd be more fair for the citizens to, to vote. But with a public hearing, if you just have one person show up, you're just hearing their opinion. You don't know if they reflect everyone else's opinion. Um, so that's just how I feel, but I could change my mind. But I don't want uh, staff to be surprised if I were to vote against it.
Liaison Fisher.
I'd be curious to know what the current um, responses to that area are. How many are already Mukatyo and how many are the RFA? Because I think, I think that kind of tells part of the story too. If it's 50 50, then it's not that big of a deal. But if we generally are the people who are responding most of the time, yeah, I don't know that going, going down easily is the best route for us. Cause then we'll still be the people providing most of the service and I, I don't think that's fair to our folks. Just my two cents.
And President Moore on Zoom. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, to Paula's point on that, I just kind of wanted to share with you guys, we did already meet with uh, Mukatyo's local uh, to discuss this. And I know their local is opposed to the annexation. They've been flat out told that they will not receive any additional funding from it. Um, and that basically they know that we're going to be the ones still servicing that area based off of uh, CAD GIS and whatnot. So um, just kind of wanted to get that out there to you guys that as far as, you know, maybe something to consider. Um, I do appreciate Paula's uh, uh, comments there on that. So, but I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence.
Well, if it uh, was a public vote, who votes? The, everybody in Mukatyo area or just those 26 people?
The residents that are part of the annexation. So it's just that those 26 parcels and the registered voters of the 111.
You have the addresses? Well, then that wouldn't take hard to go and ask them ourselves.
Any, uh, Chief Maxwell?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, we look at volume of response, but to your point, uh, that area right in there is where we usually have airplane crashes. So we usually affect a major response into that area or the McDonald's or the commercials. So the weight of our response comes in effect in that area pretty significantly too.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, more, more to come at a future meeting. Okay, great. Thank you very much. And um, all right, that takes us then on to our next item, which will be item number eight C, which is surplus asset disposition notification for discussion. And I believe that is with Chief Curtis. Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Chair, Board, Liaisons, uh, Staff and Guests. I'm before you this evening, uh, on behalf of the Fire Chief and staff to report our declaration of a surplus property for six items that were discovered missing during the 2023 annual uh, inventory process. Uh, per policy and the dollar amount, this is a um, a notification to the board uh, that does not exceed $10,000. So it does not require a resolution or any board action. And it's simply a notification which uh, complies with our policy and state auditor's office expectations. So I'm before you to answer any questions or uh, take any comments.
Commissioner Lawrence.
That's loss. Uh, do you have a breakdown of what you think where it went and how?
Uh, you know, many times this is a um, is a procedural issue. For example, we may have a piece of equipment that goes out for maintenance and repair. And it, it comes back and is beyond repair. And it gets replaced without the proper procedure following um, fourth. And those are some of the steps that I've been asked to improve in uh, logistics. And, and we want to make sure that we capture that moving forward. All in all, in the big picture, I want to say we have approximately 6.7 million dollars in assets. Uh, almost 1,700 items that were counted over the course of approximately 60 days. Um, it, it sounds on the surface, uh, just looking at it individually, it sounds like, hey, this is not good business. But in the big scheme of things, this is a tremendous win for our team. And it's a terrific uh, success. I'm very proud of uh, where we're at um, with our uh, asset tracking software. Um, the tools and um, mechanisms that we've put in place. I don't like reporting that we've uh, lost some items. And quite honestly, I'm pretty confident that we didn't necessarily lose them as much as we may not be able to find them. If that's fair.
Other questions or comments for Chief Curtis on this issue, Commissioner Chan?
I try not to get too much input to this meeting, but I just cannot. Um, I think as, as we're growing so much, all those situations should be re lost or whatever should be repeated immediately. So in a bunch of stuff. Uh, I don't know. We don't have in the bigger manufacturer, where they go, perpetual inventory. That means anytime you buy something, draw something, you do the inventory count, which CFO probably totally understand the whole part of that. That's part of the internal control. Uh, I think that really you really count the inventory, you know, quality, whatever it is. So that would be, so actually I'm, I'm already putting down in the, as a vulnerable discussion and uh, that we really should think about the balance sheets. That we're really, you know, tracking down all this. Because if anything go outside of the newspaper, doesn't look, doesn't sound good. Doesn't, right? Uh, it's a huge amount. So I think we gotta look at that more carefully. How do we put in the internal control? I know that in the past, we have always a problem with attractive assets, right? People, people can take a computer, cell phone and that type of thing. So we, I think we need, we should, we're looking to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're continually uh, improving the process, uh, expanding on our uh, software that we use. We use a program called Operative IQ. Um, we have uh, gone through some transition in the last uh, year to two years. Um, and changed some of the uh, processes that we're doing. Uh, currently I've uh, I've been tasked to review the um, app, applicable um, policies and guidelines to ensure that they're in compliance with your vision as you've stated it.
Yeah, but if once, if we, we have tracking down balance sheets. So the one balance sheet from one year to year, you really have a tracking how to, from that, that balance sheet to that inventory, to, to the, the next year balances. That's a, a real tracking way. So I, I think, as a general, we start talking about that, that system, that will be great.
Understood. Chief Curtis.
So I guess, I guess I'd like to add, I um, this was probably the least painful asset inventory we've had. And, and I, I guess I don't, I, I get, I get there were six items missing. And I think James is correct. Some of those items got, it's, it's, we have work to do on the paperwork aspect where we send a life pack thousand AED in to get fixed and we don't get that one back. We get a different one back. Um, but at the end of the day, we can't say that's what happened and, and you're seeing a couple of those things on the list. Um, I guess I want to say from the last four or five or six years of doing asset inventory, um, we've come a long, long, long way as an organization. And, and I'm, I am proud of that. And I didn't have anything to do with it. But I do know, I do know what staff has done. I know what, I know what Kathleen did before she left. I know what, what CFO Bothwell has done when he came in. Now we're transcending over to logistics. Now that we have a logistics, logistics division, it lands on James, there, there, we've kind of, we're, we're landing it where it belongs, right? The people that actually put the inventory in are the ones that track the assets throughout their life. And then there's a, a separation, James and, and CFO Bothwell have their respective roles. But I will say from a chief's perspective, I'm really happy that we're giving you this report um, in the way we are. And I don't need a resolution from the board saying we lost this stuff and reportable, right? That's a big deal and it, we've come a long, long, long way. And I guess I want to make sure the, that doesn't go unnoticed because we've taken, you know, the letters we received from the audit, we've taken what the auditors have told us seriously. We've taken what the board has said seriously. Um, and we are doing 3,000 times um, improvement. We have more to go. Um, but, but we are in a very, very good place. Um, and I'm very comfortable with where we're sitting um, with our asset inventory. Um, and um, and I guess I want the board to know that we've come a long way. Um, and you know, CFO Bothwell and his team and James and his team. And I'm going to look at Jason and his team and Sean and his team and, and the rest of the folks, because the inventory is not a one person game. It's, it's organizationally done. Um, and so for that, I say thank you to everybody that's done it. And, and I want to make sure the board knows we've come a long way and we're actually in a, in an exceptionally good place compared to where we were four years ago.
I bet there's, this is a whole industry asset um, management is probably got to go to school for it. And uh, there's magazines and uh, gosh, the federal government, the army, the Navy, even the Coast Guard, uh, cities, states. So somebody, some professional in that field would be able to tell us, or maybe somebody here knows. Uh, where do we stack up on um, percentage of loss compared? Uh where do we stack up on um percentage of loss compared to the value? I mean, I'm thinking it's pretty darn good.
We're exceptional, right?
Yeah.
I would say exceptional is the word, I don't know what the auditor is going to say about our asset inventory. Um that's coming and I'm not going to steal CFO Bothwell's thunder when we do the exit interview. But my guess is because I know they look at it, they're going to be happy with what we've done and the improvements we made.
Well, that might, that might uh stifle some of the critics that we have about perfection. Um to know how well we, there are metrics for this, so maybe somebody could find those metrics. Wait, here we go. I will uh turn over to our esteemed colleague Jesse.
He's on half, go ahead.
I I just recently went through this at Mountain Lake Terrace, uh at least for the Public Works Department. And the previous year before that and in many organizations before, uh if this is all you're missing for this quantity of of. Inventoryed items and and the value of it, I you're in great shape and you guys are doing a great job. At a certain point, a piece of paperwork gets lost, I think the very important point is is that it's not excessive. And they're also getting ahead of the game with audits. Right, they're coming to the board, they're they're doing the paperwork, hey, we found the problem. That way, when the auditor comes, you you don't get marked up for it, so yeah.
Any other, Commissioner Roland?
Just like to say that I'm impressed. Thank you, uh I just wanted to say I'm impressed, I I. I think maybe I need to look into still for uh for their their equipment here because this circular saw saw is twenty twenty years old. So we really are making best the best use of our equipment and using it for its uh its uh intended lifespan, I think it's uh it's probably in a happier place now.
Any other questions, comments, Commissioner?
I I want to emphasize here, I'm not here to criticize what we do better, good, okay? But that's reason you have a balance sheets, that's why Accounting One O One. Basically, definitely credit. Right, the twenty years old, see this right now. You said who counted? As an auditor, I've been doing auditing for. A million years, okay, the first thing you do on the, you go to a company is look at the balance sheets. That's why you have year and inventory account and redo the test count, okay? Where you go statistically saying that how much is off? You're not seeing anyone stealing it, but it. You need a confidence of organization. That to have a balance sheet, that's why the city do it, everyone doing it. So I'm I'm not talking about this particular one, I'm talking about now as we grow, I think we should look seriously. On the system itself. And it's very difficult for anyone that to see, it's a big organization. Do not have balance sheets, that's the reason when you have. I know that we do all since we have the problem auditor, they tell us on the uh attractive assets and all this stuff. But that statement does not tie to anything. But if you have actually on the balance sheet, then you're tied to it, tied to the the money there. I just wanted to say that we should have more discussion during our work workshop to do it. Uh again, I'm not criticizing these particular people, but the system itself, I think we should look at it, be open our mind and not shut it off. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board on this subject? Nope, very good, we will move on then in the agenda, thank you. And that takes us to item eight D, Board Workshop Agenda for uh discussion uh in your packet there, I think it's twenty three or twenty eight. Is our running list of uh subjects and um. If you have anything to add, feel free to chime in now or chime in in the next. Uh next few days, I will get out a email. Uh before our next meeting, kind of with a recommendation of uh six or seven items to kind of jumpstart the conversation for next Tuesday. Uh because I think next Tuesday's meeting is our last. Last meeting before that, May third, it's Friday, May third is the workshop, so uh kind of want to narrow that down and manage expectations around the item, so. Um don't need to do that tonight, but if there's anything that you'd like to have on there, let us know. Commissioner Roland.
Just a question, um I. I'm used to having acronyms in in my day job and everything means multiple things to me, so. I was just wondering if you could clarify FB uh on under your suggestions. Um I I've got the other ones above the the Chief Administrative Officer and Gap, but uh F B C, C F P and F M O, just so that I can note it.
Uh F B C is the Fire Benefit Church. Uh C F P is the Capital Facilities Plan. And then F M O is Fire Marshal's Office.
Okay.
But when I, when I created that email, I didn't know it was going to the full audience or I would have.
It's all right.
Type those out a little more.
You better put your quarters here.
Oh no.
Thank you.
Any uh any other uh comments, suggestions?
So, so so Chair just, so. I'm I'm going to be out of town for a little while. And so the sooner. If for staff to know what you want to talk about, the sooner we can prep. And and make sure we're providing you the appropriate information from a staff's perspective. Um at the end of the day, so um and and I think we have the. Um the security or the the chief of Breyer coming in to speak with you, we've got um. Um I think we we really want to be able to do a mock cardiac arrest for you to see what the crews do and the number of people involved. Um and so.
Those two are the for sure.
Those, yeah, and and um and uh I guess, I guess if if it if if it'd be okay, I'd like a. Uh just a brief segment just for me to kind of give you some of the ideas that I've got going through my head and I've been talking to staff about. Um a about things. That I'm looking futuristically and strategically that are different than. They they fall in line with some of the same things that are on our on our goals and objectives and and priority list. Um but I think there's things that um are going to face us and challenge us over the next three to four years organizationally. Um that um. That, you know, the board, the the board has to be part of that conversation. Um because it deals with with staffing issues and and people and. And you know, how do we maintain a ready workforce and how do we recruit people and how do we retain people? Um in the current environment and and I and it's a it's a very big. It's a going to be a very big challenge for us moving forward and. Um me being somebody who's been in the fire service in this career for for forty years. It's it's, it's hard to get my arms around it and I've been thinking about it for about six years now and so. Um I I'd like a just from a very selfish perspective, just a little bit of time with you guys on the third, just to kind of have a general. Quick. Conversation about the things that I'm thinking about and that that the team here at headquarters is thinking about. And and in conjunction with conversations we have the labor about the challenges we think we're going to face. That um that we. The board, we need to have conversations about moving forward, which are and they're big ones, I think. Um so.
And that sounds good.
That would be an ask for me and 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 the sooner we get the information for staff to work while I'm out of town would be fantastic, thank you.
Very good, Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah, Chief, um. So you're going to write these up for us, uh maybe so we could have those ahead of time? So we could think about them.
Yeah, I can, I can. I can, when I get back, I can do that right away when I get back and give you to you.
Delegate it to someone.
So what's that?
Delegate it to someone.
I could do that.
You don't want to, I don't want to ruin your vacation.
You're not, you're not going to, I'm here to tell you, nobody's going to ruin my vacation, so um I'm. Well. Yeah, so, yes, we'll do, I'll do my best to give you some highlights. Um and have it, but I think it's to touch the topic and I think it's a conversation we'll have over the next year. Or two. So.
Other Commissioner, board member comments on this section, Commissioner Teal fly.
Well, like I said last meeting, uh I'd like to talk about our opinions on the city of Everett.
I haven't forgotten you that we that. That's very likely to make the list.
Thank you.
And I'll get you out an email so we can talk more about it next Tuesday, if you don't like the list, of course the board can. Do whatever as we kind of narrow that down. Any other comments, questions? Okay, great, thank you. Uh that concludes unfinished business, item eight D, that takes us to new business and item A, which is the health care plan addendum. For discussion and potential action with the HR Director David Cullen. Mr. Cullen, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Chair Kenny. Uh good evening, Commissioners and Liaisons. I have brought forth um. A proposal to expand the healthcare plan to cover preventative care. It's something that we've been doing sort of. Creatively and sneakily a bit over the last several months that I've been here. Um and it's, I think it's frankly a good story of our Health and Safety Division having. Brought in some organizations to do some good preventative care for. Our members and for the covered folks on our plan. And I, hearing about this and hearing Chief Hobus's great support for these endeavors. Work with Chief Hudson in Health and Safety to look at how we might support the cost of these things because they really do. Contribute to a healthier, more productive workforce if we get folks to do appropriate preventative care. And so over the last several months that I've been here, we have supported either in whole or in part. Um these endeavors where we've brought in organizations to certain new vendors to do screenings for the folks on our healthcare plan. Um it's proven successful because we've actually found some things that otherwise wouldn't be found. The kind of counterintuitive part of this is things of this sort are already covered on our health plan. But covered through different providers and usually later in the game, a physician may order one of these tests. But to preventively order a barrage of these tests isn't typically done. And yet. Engaging in that sort of endeavor can find things and find things earlier. So that we get the appropriate level of treatment as soon as possible, saving some uh. Medical challenges for our covered lives and saving ourselves some costs for. More serious issues that are caught later, particularly cancers. So the the two that have been the most useful and successful would be ultrasound screenings that we've done and cancer blood screenings. And in both of those instances, in the last several months. We've had individuals who have found things where they could immediately take action. Um in particular, one member's spouse. Found a breast cancer diagnosis that was simply unknown. And only discovered because of this endeavor to do this blood screening. That person was able to get into a surgical procedure that um she wouldn't have known she even needed. Had she not done this, which again redounds to the benefit of that individual and her family and to the RFA. And from a simple dollars and cents perspective, this is the kind of thing that. Would end up in in a much bigger claim if it was caught stage four, for example, so. My proposal is to expand our plan so that we can cover these things, not in just a. Creative ad hoc sneaky way, the way that I've been doing it. Um but rather to make sure it, that we don't do these things in a manner that risks the integrity of our existing plan because. We do cover these things now, but not in this way with these sorts of vendors, so it's a different approach, but one that I think. Complements what we already have in our structured plan.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes, uh Director Cullen. So I would vote for this just based on the fact that it would catch. A number of people early and save, you know, that saved a lot of grief. There, from what you just said, is a possibility that. There's actually a return on investment here where we save money in the long run for doing this, though you may not be able to quantify it. And it wouldn't be some the reason to vote. Against it if it didn't. But it's a possibility that we will be actually saving money by doing this, so it's. It possibly it's just it's a win on one end and then a win on the other.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Other, Commissioner Roll.
Um so. These benefits that are listed in the the addendum uh under section, section seven. Um the first three make sense, um I was just wondering in the context of all this, this is stuff that we're already covering without deductibles through some sort of mechanism. But we're trying to codify it or is any of this new uh services that we currently aren't covering without deductible that uh uh that we're taking on?
It's kind of closer to door number one, those are things that we've been doing through Health and Safety Division. And the idea is to figure out, can we make these part of the the first three? Can we, can we do those things in a way that really will look like preventative medical care, we may not be able to, those things may still be. Kind of programmatic endeavors that don't quite fit into a health plan per se. But it's it's food for thought, so included as a possibility.
So um what exactly is employee support services, what does that kind of cover?
It's been a whole range of things that we're doing that are kind of wellness, um a lot of it behavioral health. And we've been doing really good work and and the we again mostly is is the Health and Safety Division with. Peer support and ready rebound and recess, the sort of. Endeavors we're engaging in to make sure that people can get behavioral healthcare as soon as possible and know that they have. Other options besides suffering in silence or waiting until they just can't take it anymore and doing something more extreme, so giving folks. More options to take care of themselves, knowing that those things in the long run make a very big difference in terms of health and productivity, so. That that's another kind of catchall for those sorts of endeavors.
Got you. Um and then just final question here uh in the. Description for this, um give me just a moment here to. Flip back a page, uh it says that in the past um. Past year for the preventative screenings, um it's just over a hundred thousand, uh that would kind of cover what we're currently doing for A, B and. C, or is that for the the entirety of this?
Um. A, B and C plus I forget there's one other small thing that I'm forgetting, but at least. The cancer and blood screens were close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Gotcha, and then in total, what do you anticipate the yearly cost is for the additional items there that aren't part of the cancer?
That's the tough part, I I think we're looking at hundred, hundred fifty, generally speaking, unless we do something new and different we haven't thought of.
In total?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Next liaison switch.
Well, I'm going to speak in favor of this. Because I'm not, I'm not shy. Um. A year and a half ago. I went into an urgent care. And they did some blood work. And um I felt fine other than the sore foot that I had on that particular day. And um my white blood cell count was high. And about six months later, I. Finally got back into the doctor's office to follow up on that blood test. And I was diagnosed with chronic myeloid leukemia and I had no. Visible symptoms of having the disease. Um I've been getting treatment for the last year. Um I'm so close to remission, I can taste it. Um and so being proactive, I mean, had I not gone in. It it could have gone on for a very long time. Undetected and especially with the conditions that. Your crews experience with being in fires and the fact that we know that their clothes um are causing them to have cancers. I think the money upfront to be proactive, to try and help them and their family members find things ahead of time. It will save you so much money in the long run because you won't be having those stage four cancers. Sneak up on people because it's not something that's usually looked at. Um and the morale boost that I think that it gives to your. All of your staff to show them that. You, you know, you care about their health and welfare and well being of them and their families. Um because mine took me by total surprise and um. I I I can sympathize with other people who would have that happen to them. So I would, I would highly recommend it because I think it's a win win. Probably going to end up being less money out of the RFA's pocket for medical care. And it's um taking care of the people who are out there doing the job daily for you.
Uh Commissioner Lawrence then Chief Maxwell. Chief Maxwell.
Oh, I I was just going to say, you know. I think we all know how broken healthcare is in this country, in fact, it's not even healthcare, it's sick care. We wait, we wait till the house is on fire to fix it. And we've seen how effective our fire prevention has worked. If if this country can start to do more work like this. We're going to start to see the reduction in the fires, you know, when we saw America burning in the seventies and eighties and look at the reduction. If the, you know, these are these little bright lights, these bright spots that we can do here. And and I am, I'm certain we are going to save a lot more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, probably one diagnosis of cancer would probably take that up. Probably one diagnosis of cancer would probably take that up. So we've seen how effective we are at fire prevention. This is the same thing with people.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes, thank you, Chief. That's why I ran for fire, a hospital commissioner. So um, Director Collin, is your um, healthcare plan addendum, is it fully ready to go? So if we vote on it tonight, we can implement it? Well, I'd like to, well, let that, let the chair start that.
Before we, before we get to any action, I just want to see if there's any other questions or comments about the, about the issue, Commissioner Roland.
Just one thing, um, I, I, I agree with, with this wholeheartedly. I think it's a, a great plan. I've heard just in, in passing about this employee support services program. And I'd love, uh, love it if either at the, uh, the retreat or at a future work session, we could just learn a little bit more about what we're doing here to help uh, with these kind of, I don't want to say experimental programs, but uh, new ways of doing things.
Questions or comments for Director Collin on the issue? That I think we are ready for a potential motion to adopt the, that addendum number one. It's been moved by Commissioner Roland and second by Commissioner Fernhoff to adopt addendum number one to the South County Fire Healthcare Active Plan, I guess, for lack of a better term. Um, move in second, is there a discussion on the motion? Any discussion, Commissioner Roland?
Once this is approved, how, how soon is it, is it immediately in effect and our, our employees can just start going and, and getting these done? Or I just want to make sure if people listen to this meeting here that it gets passed, that they understand when, when it becomes active, so that they don't get ahead of the ball.
I would say yes and no. The, the better explanation is these are things that we are organizing and bringing to the RFA. So it's not the folks can just go and do something independently. And we already have some slated for September upcoming.
Gotcha.
It's endeavors, we're going to take, communicate to the body politic and say, come on these days if you wish.
Understood. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to approve given any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you. All right, that concludes our new business item number nine and nine A and takes us to agenda item number 10, which is committee updates, starting with the finance and human resources, Commissioner Chan.
Yeah, I don't, we, we're not going to have a meeting this week, I think. Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner. Yeah, I both, well, we're not going to talk a little bit, some item, we may want to move to next week. To see whether anything.
Anything else, Commissioner Chan, on the committee?
No.
Okay.
Well, other committee member, do you want to say anything, any input?
Okay. Okay. Next up then is intergovernmental committee with Commissioner.
I believe we covered everything you have.
So the one thing I didn't cover, uh, Commissioner Widdes is, is um, we met with the city of Mountain Lake Terrace on the fire marshal agreement. Um, it was an exceptional meeting. Um, and um, I would anticipate probably why I'm out of town. Um, at the next intergovernmental that uh, Chief Anderson and Deputy Fire Marshal Sherman, Jason and Sean will bring that forward and give you guys a review. Um, and I'm hoping we get to a place where we can bring it back to the board for a first review of the updated fire marshal agreement, the first meeting in May. So I'm excited about that. Um, and it was an exceptional meeting. That's the only thing I wasn't able to brief you on. Um, specifically Fire Marshal, I was going to do my chief support, I forgot.
Thanks. So we have.
Anything else from the government? Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. And next up then is Snow nine one one with Commissioner.
Yes, good evening. Uh, we have a scheduled uh, fire tack meeting on April 10th, which is this week. And then next week we follow up with an in-person meeting here at fire headquarters. So we'll have an update after that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That takes us to item number 11, which is Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioner comments? Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Chan.
Yeah, um, I have my annual check. I do not have any hearing problem. When I look at that right now, I know that I was this committee or the security, then we would be thinking about even last week, a lot of people, but right now you look at that, it's really ridiculous that we're spreading so far away. Is there any way we can, you know, cut up more table and get closer to here? And I know, I don't, I've been here, I never had any strangers sitting in the back. If some stranger coming in, maybe we should, you know, somehow do it. Otherwise, I have real difficulty sometime when you, even David, when you talk, you, you can soft speak. I really have to agree. Go ahead. I'm just suggesting that get closer in here. We can listen to each other. I want, I want to see your facial expression very well. And also do, I, I think we talked about it, space in here, I think that's dangerous on that in here. So I don't, I don't want to, today maybe start thinking about maybe even expanding that, the area. So it's not kind of, that, that little block in there is really dangerous. And then maybe some space in there too. So again, yeah. So that's, I think we should think about it. I don't know when will we have due to renovation, but before any accident will happen, that's my suggestion that administration look, look at it and say, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any other Commissioner comments? Not seeing any request for other Commissioner comments, then uh, we have uh, up next will be an executive session. We have two items. Consider the selection of a site for the acquisition or the acquisition of real estate uh, by lease or purchase pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one B C. And review the performance of public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one G. Um, Chief Wismann, I'm thinking thirty minutes total. You think that will take care of your part of the?
I, I think, I, I think it's probably going to be a little bit less than that. I, I mean, I think.
But I need some from up for.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm hoping, I'm hoping we're fifteen, twenty minutes on our side.
Always an optimist.
I know, I know, but, but um, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. So uh, we are here, okay. Why don't we um, why don't we plan to take a ten minute recess until, or eleven minute recess until about approximately eight thirty-five? Resume an executive session at eight thirty-five to uh, nine oh five. We'll call it thirty minutes. And we do not plan to take action at the conclusion of executive session.
Not for my item, no.
Yeah, I don't think so. Very good. So we'll be in uh, we'll be adjourned for a break and then to executive session. Thank you.
The executive session has been extended for ten minutes. The executive session has been extended for five minutes. The executive session has been extended for five minutes. The executive session has been extended for five minutes. Without objection, the special meeting is adjourned at ten or nine fifty P M.